Can we call the meeting to order February 6, 2024? Madam Clerk, can I have the roll?
Councilmember Evans?
Present.
Councilmember Edwards?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Randolph?
Present.
Mayor Millman?
Here.
Councilmember Beth Campbell?
Present.
Councilmember Art?
Here.
And Councilmember Taylor?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, all present. Stand for the flag salute, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I move to approve of the agenda and order and content.
Second.
I have a motion and a second.
I'd like to amend the agenda. I'd like to have, I'd like to add a discussion item to require that we talk about having all commission and subcommittee meetings recorded and streamed.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to add an agenda item to our business items as in referencing committee, subcommittee items, discussion. Councilmember Beth Campbell.
Yeah, I saw in one of our agenda items coming up that we're going to be, looks like leaning pretty heavily on subcommittee meetings. They are not streamed, they are not recorded, there are times that the public is not really able to see them, so I think it's important that if we're going to be moving to this model of governance, that we should give people every opportunity to see what we've been up to.
Any further discussion, questions? I have a question just on the logistics of that. Is that, what, from the city standpoint, is that onerous? Is that possible, or is it, we already have it on video?
But I think we can, right now, the action for council, I just added to the agenda item, we can, we can have that and then we can have this discussion, let me think about it for a second. I have some thoughts, but we can talk about that.
Okay. Any further thoughts? Councilmember Beth Campbell.
Well, just for my second thought, you know, we're willing to add an agenda item at the last minute to raise our salary, so it seems like we should, at the very minimum, add an agenda item to make the meetings a little bit more transparent, if we're going to be doing more outside of the purview of this meeting.
Just to clarify, our subcommittee meetings are recorded and viewable by the public and able to be attended by the public, correct?
The, the subcommittee meetings, right now, the only one that I can think of, right, is the Trestle Subcommittee. Those are available via, to join public while it's happening via Teams. They are open to the public. Recording, we're not recording those right now. We have the ability through Teams to record them and post them to the website. Again, we could talk about this during the agenda item if council adds that. One clarification I would want, and I, I would have some reservations on one end of it if we go one way, is what does streaming mean? Is that live streaming on cable at the same time? Because that's a much bigger lift than streaming on Teams and providing a recorded version.
Well, this is, this is a point of order. This is a discussion of the item. We're discussing if we would like to add it so that we can have the discussion. That's the point here.
I, I understand, Councilmember. I want to understand it before we go take a vote on that. So, right now, just to clarify, we have a subcommittee meeting, it's, the public can access it.
Point, point of order. I believe we are getting to the, the actual item, so if we can, do we want this on the agenda or not?
Well, that's why I'm asking, because I want to know what's going on right now, what the lift is to add it to the...
To, to the agenda.
Correct.
The agenda should be zero add, like, we get to add whatever we need to on the agenda and discuss it at that point.
Well taken, thank you. Okay, let's have a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Seeing none, motion carries, we'll add that to business item number eight. Do I have an amended motion?
I move to approve the, the order, the agenda and order and content as amended.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Seeing none, motion carries. Public comments. We have a couple of written public comments that everybody should have. Do I have anybody signed up? Okay, public comments. When I call your name, come to the microphone, you'll have three minutes, state your name whether you live in the city limits. Alex Campbell.
Hello, thank you. I'm glad that that was picked up after I signed up. I'm Alex Campbell, I live in City Limits, and tonight I come to speak to you, well, I guess I'll talk about the salary commission first. As you might all know, or some, at least six of you know, the salary commission was something I very closely monitored two years ago. At the time, I did a great deal of analysis across King County, and I'm hoping that during your discussion about recording subcommittees and commissions, I believe commissions should all be recorded too, since it is happening in this room, it is an awkward time, let's make sure it's available for the general public, both as a stream and as a long-term recording, both for Woodenville and for the rest of the community. Great deal of interesting conversation, if you go back and watch the Redmond discussions, especially how it kind of blew up at the end. And I will be offering this ahead of time, little teaser, I was really quite happy that every other agency I asked for salary data got it back to me within a week, most of it within two days, so I have, in fact, in my hands, every salary of every city, city council member in all of King County, and I will be refreshing the rest of my data. If Mr. Fritz will provide the, what was that number you're now using? Property, property, something about assessed property value for the rest of the cities of the county, I'll happily merge that into. So, thank you very much, and I'll be looking forward to addressing the salary commission in a few days, and hopefully it'll all be on recording so everyone else can see it.
Okay, consent calendar.
I move to accept the consent calendar as written.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries, thank you. Brings us to our first business item, business item number four, approval of proposed final design for the new SR 202 pedestrian bridge. Mr. Buchanan or Ms. D'Souza?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, good evening, good evening, council. I have this evening, a very short presentation on the approval of final bridge design for the 202 Trestle. And a lot of this information was already presented in the staff report, so just overview and highlights of that staff report and also just some background. And if, at the end, if there are any questions, both city manager, Mr. Buchanan and I are available to answer any questions you may have. So, just a very quick overview, the design of the pedestrian bridge was started almost a little over, or little less than two years ago, the staff and the project team had quite a few meetings and presentation with Public Spaces Commission to, to come up with the elements for the bridge itself. Based on the feedback that we received from Public Spaces Commission over, over almost a year, couple of design options were presented to council, and one of the, one of the option was, of course, the layered louver concept. Based on the feedback that we received on the initial design, the council appointed a subcommittee when the initial concept was presented, so that the design actually aligns with council's vision and the community's vision for this bridge. And once the subcommittee was formed in June, they were, in coordination with project team, worked on the, an alternate concept for the bridge design, which we are calling it as a gateway arch. This design and the layered louver, the initial, initial concept was presented, had an extensive public engagement, both at the concert series and festivals, festival itself for Celebrate Woodenville. Staff also hosted an online survey, and just the image to your right is one of the concert events that, where we received all the public feedback on the two options that were initially presented. This is the layered louver, and this was the gateway arch that was put together in coordination with Trestle Subcommittee. So, this was the gateway arch, that design, which is, basically, this was the point in the design where we wanted to get a feedback, we wanted to get feedback on the actual bridge form and profile, and this was the design that was picked and preferred by the community overwhelmingly, and was presented to council in September of last year, and that was approved at that council meeting, because this provided us the framework for putting in more refinements and taking it closer to the next step, which is the actual design, the structural design of the bridge. So, we took this concept, we took this bridge form and profile, we added, did some more graphic refinements, and I'm, I'm sorry, the graphics are not popping, but I have a few slides that you will see, and also it's in your staff report. So, the next step was, once the form and the profile was, was selected, the project team put together graphics for the panel. Two graphics were developed, one was, had an abstract concept, and the other one was flowing concept. And then the theme was, of course, theme and the color palette, both were consistent with the downtown vision, farm to forest, the color palette as well, and also to just how it blends in, and also, at the same time, creates a gateway to, for the city. The two concepts that were presented, one was, as I said, the abstract, the graphic on the left is the graphic, the abstract option, and then the one on the right was the more free-flowing graphic for the panel. That was the main, the main goal for that public outreach was the actual graphic on the panel. Panel is the ones that is above the, above the bridge. And this was presented at the Winterfest event in December, and I believe it was a six to eight hour event where we presented this, and it was, it was very well received, and we got a lot of feedback on both the options. The community preferred the, the abstract option because of how it aligned with the, with the murals below, the crispness of the image, but they also liked the transparency of the graphic on the, on the, on this image as well, because it allowed more transparency, allowing people more, including kids, to, able to have the view. So, those were some initial feedback that we received. This was one of the, captured the moment where we received the feedback on the, on the two options that we presented. They were pretty close, but the one that was more abstract clearly had more votes, and also just receiving the feedback. So, based on that feedback that we received, based on the feedback that we received at the Winterfest event, we refined the panel graphics more, just to bring more transparency, also play with the color palette, work on the lettering on the bridge itself, added the texture to the abutment wall to, to go while complement the mural that's underneath, worked on some handrail options as well. So, we worked on a lot of details on the actual bridge design. And so, that is the bridge design that is being presented today for council approval. This is the final bridge design that has come over a year of extensive public engagement and online platform as well. So, this is the final bridge design, here's two rendering, one the daytime, and one also showing the lighting effect for the same concept. So, I think that was, I will pause for just a few minutes, just to see if there are any questions before I go into just wrap up in terms of the timeline and actual selection of the approval design.
Any questions? You did such a good job, no questions.
So, just before I present the recommended motion, recommending approval of the final design, I wanted to bring on, highlight the timeline. The, we are currently in the design process right now, design and permitting process. We are 50 to 60% design done. We have also submitted critical permits to WashDOT NFHWA4, started the process, that is the critical path item, and that is expected, based on how quickly we get through the permits, we are anticipating design and permitting phase to be done by mid to late next year. With that, the construction start would be late 2025, early 2026, and that timeline is critical, as there's, that timeline is driven by the federal and state funding. So, the reason I bring up the anticipated timeline is that it is important for us to get approval on this final design, as this will allow us to take it from the, I want to call it more aesthetic, non-engineering aspect of the bridge, to taking it on to the engineering, so it'll allow us to actually put together engineering documents, plans and specs, and continue with the design and get, get it to completion. So, I just wanted to make sure that was highlighted as you discuss and make the recommendation for approval.
Anybody? No, no comments, questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
I move that the city council approve the proposed final design for the new pedestrian bridge, proposed as part of the SR 202 widening and trussel replacement project, and authorize the city manager to, to take other actions as necessary to implement this action.
Second motion.
I have a motion and a second. As the maker of the motion, would you like to speak to your motion?
The real short thing that I wanted to say is, this has kind of been difficult to get going. I think we had our first design that was rejected, and we went and more or less started from scratch, and I appreciate the work that went into that, by, by the folks who actually did the work to make sure that we got a new design put in place, and something that is a bit more attractive, and I also appreciate the efforts to get the additional feedback from the community to end up with what we have.
Councilmember Beth Campbell.
So, country living city style, everyone has heard the moniker, what it looks like. We have a farm to forest northwest theme, this is supposed to be the design standard, I look at that, and that is a bridge to any town USA. It's not a bridge to Woodenville. There's a big name that says Woodenville, because otherwise you wouldn't know it's Woodenville by looking at it. And we had an opportunity to do something that, instead of telling people we're in Woodenville, we could have shown them. This is what Woodenville style looks like. This is farm to forest, this is northwest woodland, that is Woodenville. But instead, we have a big sign, lots of lighting, it's like Las Vegas but with slightly more glitz, if that's possible. I don't see how it fits Woodenville. I'm disappointed that we're falling back on, this was the preferred design, no, it was one of the two options that was presented, and people picked the best one. I think we could have done a little bit more, had the rest of council been invited, but of course, this was a subcommittee action, and subcommittee brings it to us fully fleshed out, and it's intended to be that way, so that there isn't discussion. I'm disappointed in how it looks. It looks like any other bridge, but we don't live in any other city, we live in this city, and we had an opportunity to make it look great, and it's going to pass, my vote makes no difference here, but I think Woodenville deserves something more attractive than this.
Deputy Mayor Randolph?
I believe that those meetings that were had were public, and attendance was not only encouraged but invited, and certainly, I, I know you must have attended each and every one to make sure that your voice was heard, and maybe they voted against that vision. It was not just three council members, but also the community. I believe now is probably a little bit late to consider it, given that we're actually moving towards actually implementing this bridge.
Councilmember Beth Campbell.
So, I guess that's the point I'm trying to make here. This bridge is coming to us, we have to do it right now, if we don't do it now, it's never going to pass, that's the point. I don't see how this had to have been a subcommittee. I know why it was a subcommittee, so that there was minimal discussion amongst council members who perhaps don't fully agree. I don't think it should have been taken out of hands of council. I think that the public is more likely to attend a meeting at 2:00, or at 7:00 PM on the first and third Tuesday of every month, they know we'll be here. When we start getting cute with weekdays, in middle of the day, when people have jobs and lives, we're just not going to get the involvement that we have at a meeting like tonight, when we actually have people in the audience. So, take it or leave it, I don't like the design, I think we deserve better, and whether or not we use the subcommittee in the future, this is what I think is going to happen, is the subcommittee is going to wait until the last minute, present it, and say, we've got to do it right now, there's no, no other discussion, where were you all this other time? Well, that's the problem, is the public's not involved, and this project is not what I'm looking for.
I disagree with that 100%. We, we had over a year of, of Public Spaces looking at bridge designs, and it came to this council, this council rejected that, the proposed bridge design. We can't make a bridge out of something that people don't like, we had to make a bridge, and we had deadlines to meet for grants and design opportunities, and so we had to meet those, we had to move very quickly. The best way to move quickly was, I asked for all of council to provide their preferred bridge designs, so we could all look at them. We had 31, five bridges that were put up on the screen, that was too many, so I asked all council members to vote on their favorite, we got down to six, and then we got down to two. We had probably the most robust city engagement that Woodenville's ever seen, we had 1,600 votes from, from the public on that bridge. Everybody at this council had an opportunity to present their bridge design and get four votes to, to go to their bridge design. We've engaged the public, we engaged the council, we've met our deadlines, we have further deadlines to meet, so I think, I think what Councilmember Beth Campbell was saying is...
Point of order, we don't address council members directly, you can address a point, but not the council member, this is a rule you created. You address me by name, that's not a point, that's a name.
I think the previous comment is inaccurate and is not reflective of what, what the process really was. I'm actually, staff worked very hard, and I appreciate of it, council worked very hard on this. We had robust community engagement on Facebooks, Woodenville Weekly websites, Celebrate Woodenville concert series, we've never seen that before. So, I'm, I'm actually very pleased and happy with the, the process and the fact that we were able to come up with a bridge design and the art in a very short period of time is, is noteworthy, and I'd like to thank council and staff, thank you. Councilmember Evans?
Thank you. Could we go back to the final design? So, I think all of us, I know when we had the 35 or 36 that each of us put forth, in terms of the ideal bridge that we'd like, you know, if we, if money was no object, and if time was no object, and engineering was no object, we definitely could have had something just amazing here. But time, money, and engineering constraints are objects here. We have to be really thoughtful about how we spend taxpayer money. We also need to work within the current constraints here, right? We have to work within what's already there, because we're not going to rip everything out and start from scratch, that would be a huge burden to taxpayers in Woodenville. So, so we weren't starting from a blank slate, where we could just blue sky, whatever we wanted, we were starting with some, some constraints. And we were also trying to make something that would be aesthetically pleasing, that would have low long-term maintenance, that would fit in with our design standards, but also fit in with the murals that are already there. As you can see, we wanted to preserve that part of the city. And so, as, as was previously stated, we've done more engagement on this than we ever have, and at every step along the way, we got engagement. And the first design that came to us was pretty resoundingly rejected, not just by council, but also by the public, over the, over the summer at the concert series. And, you know, as much as all of us probably had a favorite bridge design that we saw, we had constraints, and we really had to balance out the long-term cost to Woodenville, the current engineering situation, and I think that our designers and our staff did a really good job in, in, in listening to us, getting that feedback, and putting it into designs that people could react to. Thank you.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yeah, I just want to highlight the great work that staff did in terms of community engagement here. We talk about community engagement, but this was a great example of meeting the community at where they're at. Thousands of people online participating, hundreds of people in person, and multiple layers of review, whether it's meeting them at events, meeting them online, and providing opportunities at council meetings. I think this is a good example going forward of ways we can get people involved in the decision-making process, so when it does come to a vote like this, it's not just the council talking about what's here today, we have the input of hundreds, if not thousands of residents from Woodenville in making this decision, so I think this is a great example going forward of how to meet community where they're at, and again, building on that as we go.
My last question, so, well, a couple of questions. The, the amount of grant money that we're talking about, what, can you go over that and what we were talking about?
Point of order, there's been a motion made, the time for questions has passed.
I can ask a question from staff on the, on the issue.
Point of order, the point is made that we are only supposed to ask questions before a motion is made, there is a motion before us, we're making our two comments, that's the standard that you've set previously.
Your point of order is not well taken. So, the amount of money that we're talking about, grants towards this bridge, can you go over those? And then my other question was, 133rd is going to be the detour route still, is that still the plan? And when do we anticipate that detour route being open? Also, my last part is, the, the plan is still to use the old bridge, or at least part of that, to replace the Salmon Barrier Priority 1, State Priority 1 culvert, and can you outline that, please?
I will start with the easy one. 133rd roundabout, or the grid road extension from Woodsnow to Little Bear Creek Parkway, so, maybe there are two pieces. So, 133rd grid road extension, there is the extension from 175th to Woodsnow, that is currently under construction and by Israel Flats, and there's also the section from Woodsnow to Little Bear Creek Parkway, that has the roundabout and a below-grade tunnel. So, the, the piece that is, and that is being designed and will be constructed as part of, as part of the city project. That is under design right now, that meaning the extension, roundabout, and the below-grade design, below-grade tunnel. The design is expected to be completed by end of this year, with the anticipation of going out to bid late fall, or late 2024, with the construction in 2025, with the same, to make sure that the bridge aligns well with the opening or start of the construction for the Trestle project, which is 2026. So, that answers the 133rd. In terms of grant, if I remember the numbers, okay.
We've got four different funding sources outside of city funds for this project right now. We've got $5 million for Move Ahead, two and a quarter for a WashDOT pedestrian bike safety program, two and a half from a federal appropriation, and another four and a half from the Washington TIB, so that's a cumulative total of 14 and a quarter million dollars.
And that's a $17 million bridge we're anticipating?
That's the ballpark we're at right now.
And then my last was on the culvert process.
134th Avenue Culvert Design, that project, the design has been kicked off, the design was also funded, we have two different grant funds, King County and a state fund for the design of that project. So, the design is underway, and it, the feasibility of using the trussel, the rail trussel for the culvert is still, is still part of the design and will be evaluated as part of the design process.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Seeing none, let's take a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Hi.
Councilmember Beth Campbell?
No.
Mayor Millman?
Yes.
Councilmember Art?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
No.
And Deputy Mayor Randall?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries 5-2. Thank you. Thank you for all the work on this, it was a long process. Business item number five, short-term rental regulations. Mr. Buchanan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. I do not have a presentation this evening. This is a, just picking some of the highlights from the staff report, which kind of lays out the whole why we're at this point in the conversation. Council requested agenda item, I think at least four council members requested this agenda item. In your packets this evening, we have some of the very initial research and by that I mean some of the examples from other jurisdictions that were offered in various conversations when this agenda item was requested. So, you have four of those, just by way of example. Again, this being a council-initiated item, this is very much the start of this conversation. If council has an interest, I think there's a variety of ways that it can move forward from the typical providing direction to staff and coming back with, and legal counsel and coming back with some draft language. This item is probably a little more complex and probably doesn't lend itself to that process quite as easily. There are other opportunities, like we've talked about, the subcommittee route. It could be a series of multiple council work sessions. I think it's really up to the council on how they want to tackle this, if they want to tackle this.
Councilmember Evans?
Thank you. I've done a ton of research on this. I've gone and spoken to, I've gone to the person's house who's come here a number of times and I've taken a look at a lot of different jurisdictions. I know I provided you with some initial ideas that we should explore because we have a lot to balance. We have residents, you know, rights to live in a place that's not party city. We have property owners' rights to be able to use their property. We also have considerations in terms of our housing action plan, allowing lots of short-term rentals, reduces our housing supply and drives up the cost of housing. We also are a city that thrives on tourism. It's, it's a complex situation. And then we need to look at how do we make this enforceable so that people who are bad actors and not, you know, being a good community member are held accountable and not allowed to continue to become nuisance neighbors? So, there's a lot to consider. And as, you know, subcommittees are sort of a hot topic tonight, but I would move that we create a subcommittee for this because there is a lot of code that we need to get into and it is going to take a lot of time to get through this. I also think that as part of that subcommittee, that we should have at least one, if not two, community open houses so that we can make sure that we hear the voices of a lot of different perspectives within the city.
Councilmember Bess Campbell?
There it is, it's the other subcommittee. Yay, guess what that means? That means that three people are going to have meetings that are going to be during the day when you're at work, which means you will have to go digging through the city's website to find the meeting. And by the time it comes back to council, it's already baked and too late. I was also looking through the staff report and have done a lot of research and I was surprised to see Shalan included because they seem to me to be the exact opposite of what we want. Shalan is in a major crunch for housing for the people who live there, so much so that they have housing trust funds set up. And I'm also surprised that, how do I put this? There are real estate interests in Woodinville that have interests in Shalan. So, I guess I understand why that has come in front of us. I would suggest we look at the Los Angeles model, which is called, where is it? The home sharing ordinance. You can only home share if you own the host, the house is your primary residence. The key here, tourism, no. If you listen to Olympia, you listen to the feds. Housing is the major issue here right now. Tourism dollars can go into hotels. What I think we need is to limit through home sharing ordinances and do exactly what Olympia's been telling us, which is find a way to put people in homes. I am not in favor of a subcommittee. Historically, this council has come in early on Tuesdays to have meetings where we all are involved in the discussion, even those you don't agree with. Imagine that. We made it work then, but we refuse to make it work now. So, this subcommittee, I anticipate, will be headed by the mayor. It will be one of two of the female council members, not named Rachel Bess Campbell, and then one other. It will come back fully baked and you will have very minimal opportunities to make your voice heard. So, if you have anything to say, say it at the end of the meeting now because that's the last chance you'll get.
Councilmember Art?
Thank you. Steering the topic of conversation back into short-term rentals, this has been an issue that the public has raised repeatedly. It deserves to be treated in a manner that we put a lot of time and effort into thinking through the details of it, not only for our homeowners and our housing policy, but also for the city. As Councilmember Evans mentioned, we need to make it enforceable. We need it to not be a cost burden, whatever ordinance we come up with. And I don't want it to be reactionary. Yes, we have had a bad situation that has come to our attention recently, but to enact legislation in haste, I think will come back to bite us in the end. So, I would advocate for a very considered approach to take some time to really engage the community here. That's the number one thing that I would push for is open houses, opportunities for both residents, business owners, and neighbors throughout the city to come and talk to us about what they prioritize. Because I do believe that there is a balance, as mentioned before, between tourism and housing here. And we need to strike that balance and it may not be the same in all parts of our city. So, I think it's going to be a very complex issue. It deserves to be taken slowly and carefully. And that's maybe not the best thing to do from the dais on a Tuesday night. So, whether that means a subcommittee or working groups before meetings, something where we can really hash through the details.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yeah, I think this is a very important problem and/or opportunity for us to review and I know it's in all neighborhoods. We've heard about one particular situation, but we do have short-term rentals that are very good neighbors and working. So, I think probably the best thing we can do is pull a cap together as opposed to a council member, a subcommittee, but maybe put together five residents from different neighborhoods that are representative and have some council support to that team and staff support. And I think that would be good because it would allow the neighbors who are impacted to learn and add to the solution that we propose because we're not experts. And I think we all come in with a lot of bias. So, I think it would be good if we had the neighbors that are adjacent to these come in and, and put something together that's workable. And then, same time, I think we need to take a look at new neighborhoods that are coming up, that haven't been built yet or haven't been set up, and maybe figure out how we want to cover those, so, before it gets out of hand. So, I, I think residents could give us a lot of input. That, that's my recommendation.
Anyone else? So, I, I think Councilmember Evans expressed a lot of what I think on this, is that most people's biggest investment is their home. And you're right to enjoy your home in the way that you see fit is, is an important item to me and it should be to the council. And that would include using it as a short-term rental as it's allowed and it's also true that you should be able to enjoy your property without, without having some of the issues that have come to council regarding garbage and noise and whatnot. So, one of the things that I've been talking to people on a regular basis is HOAs. HOA is a democratic form in a hyper-local basis in neighborhoods. HOAs should address this where, where applicable and that's a good way to handle the issue on whatever side that the HOA decides to fall on. That's a democratic process in the neighborhoods. Having said that, I know that not all neighborhoods have HOAs and haven't kept up on them and the VRBO and Airbnb thing is relatively new. So, whatever we decide to do, we do, I, I feel strongly, we do need robust community engagement and community input. We, we serve the community. This is, again, their primary residence often and so it's, it's a big deal and there's a lot of issues, housing stock and other things, so. And there's, there's laws, there's enforcement, there's, there's a lot of issues here that I think need to be explored. I think a good way to do that would be a subcommittee that would involve the community, similar to what we did the bridge. Again, the bridge had 1,600 engagement and that's the most we've ever seen in Woodinville as far as I know. So, I'm not saying we're going to get 1,600 on short-term rentals, but we have the capability of really engaging the community and we've proven that. So, that's my thought on short, short-term rentals. I can see in a, in a tourist area where it's probably, might be favored, might not be, it depends on if it's owner-occupied or what people intend with their residence. But I, I think this is something what the community needs to weigh in, very, very enlarged numbers that we know we have a solid direction to go on, so. Deputy Mayor Randall?
So, housing is a place where there's often creative loopholes. Creative loopholes is something that has definitely happened with short-term rentals. That means how they get created, how they're applied, how they're utilized, and how they are enforced has, has been difficult. One of the interesting things from the Chilean ordinances is that they actually require you to register that, which means it becomes trackable, which is one of the most difficult pieces in terms of enforcement, is knowing where these places are. And if it's not registered, then there should be a high fine because it, it's definitely not catalogued and counted within our housing stock. So, those are things that I would like to definitely make sure that we keep into consideration. I do believe that people have a right to use their home as they see fit. However, I find it intriguing that at the state level, there has been no discussion about how to counteract or, or how the GMA interacts with short-term housing. So, we're taking it up as a body. I have to agree with Councilmember Taylor. I think that this will not be a very short-term thing. We need some engagement from the community, which I think everybody said, and I think a small commission would probably be the best place because it sets up a place for discussion. This will probably be longer-lived than something that council could probably see through with the other things that are coming down the pipe. I would like people who are focused and from different communities, who can speak with this with different insight and different perspectives, to be able to reflect on this. And I think that the best way to do that is with a commission because those would be people that threaded throughout our community, who can speak with it in a different way as owners, renters, and people in our community who are also intrigued by our tourism and see that as part of Woodinville's goal. So, big points of interest, just make it enforceable and low-cost burden. And I think being able to register and have a commission actually discuss that over a long term, so we can act on it in that way is the right thing to do.
Any other discussion questions? Do, do I have a motion at this point or are we just discussing?
It's a discussion item.
Okay. Okay. Thank you very much.
I, I guess this is kind of a question for city staff. Do you feel like you have what you need to move on to next step?
I, I think if the, if the general consensus is a commission or a council committee, if council, I don't know if council's prepared to make that decision tonight. We can always put this forward on a future meeting and, and have that conversation about exactly what that looks like. But if that's the consensus, that, yes, then I'm good with, with this for the evening.
Councilmember Bess Campbell?
So, we're talking about robust community engagement, but we're being very clear that we don't want robust council member engagement in these conversations before it goes to the public. So, I think I would be in favor of us coming early to a meeting. We've done this before in previous councils, coming in at 6:00 before a meeting. I prefer that much more than I do a commission that meets at odd times and we have robust community engagement, but boy, we want to make sure we exclude council members who don't exactly agree with us. So, I would be totally fine with a commission of people from the neighborhoods. They absolutely have to have a voice in this, but engagement of council, we're all equals up here. And to create a subcommittee where you try to exclude the voices that you don't agree with is undemocratic. It doesn't make the job any easier. It's still the same presentation, whether it's to two faces, three faces, or seven. So, I say that we all pull up our sleeves and work together on this one.
Okay. Do you feel like you got what you need at this point? Okay. Thank you very much. Business item number six, resolution number, hold on, 634, approving revisions to the city's personnel policies. Mr. Herzog?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, as you noted, we have resolution number 634 in front of you tonight, which would approve revisions to the city's personnel policies. And to get us started, I just wanted to provide a quick couple sentences of background. The personnel policies in the city cover a number of topic areas and it's really meant to be a resource to staff at all levels. So, by their nature, they are very broad. They cover many aspects of employment here at the city. I've got a few examples up there, but there's much more included in those as well. Those are included in full in your packet tonight if you'd like to reference those during our conversation. One thing I'll also note is that in 2013, via resolution number 429, council authorized the city manager to establish, amend, and enforce personnel policies and procedures. However, this was clarified by council a little bit later to require council approval for any compensation-related provisions or changes thereof. So, we are here tonight with five suggested compensation-related changes to the city's policies. On the subsequent slides, I'll show each one of those proposed changes and provide a kind of narrative and explanation to go along with it. But before I do so, I'd like to also point out that the personnel policies, like I said, are included, so if there's questions about further or broader context, they're, they're in your packets tonight. Okay. So, diving in, the first proposed change has to do with working out of class. This proposed addition would add language to an already existing section regarding increased pay for employees working in a higher position than their usual one. Even more specifically, this proposed addition relates only to situations wherein an employee is working in the capacity of acting city manager. As I'm sure you'll all agree, that role comes with a significant level of, significant and unique level, I would say, of responsibility and thus it made sense to create provisions that speak directly to that. So, the provisions suggested tonight include a smaller-
Mr. Herzog, we have a question.
Yeah.
Councilmember Bess Campbell?
Do other cities do this? I've never, I've never heard of this in the private sector of immediately going to the next pay level. I mean, obviously in the private sector, when your boss goes on vacation, you know, there you are. For everyone else, it's a lower threshold, but any days, three days or more, so when the city manager goes on vacation, all of those days, someone else is going to be paid to the city manager's level?
There is some discretion there. To answer your first question, we looked at a few different cities that have working out of class policies. This one, again, here takes the scalpel and, and suggests provisions relating to the acting city manager role. The discretion that I mentioned being up to 10% additional pay, there is some room for any, anything between 0 and 10%. So, it's not an automatic amount and it depends on the employee who is filling that role and what their current rate is.
Just to follow on, is this something that, since this is, so compensation packages include salary- include salary benefits and all of the other things, is this something that we can assume would be in a compensation survey that we are still waiting for, like the super complicated one? Is this considered one of the many personnel levers that we can pull to retain employees?
I suppose it could be considered in that vein. This happens fairly infrequently, so to us, it made more sense to include it here in the personnel policies.
I can add on to the fairly infrequently comment that Mr. Herzog made. This has happened once in the eight years that I've been here, where I've had an active city manager where I was out of the country for a week at a time. Other than that, typically, when I'm traveling, even on vacation, as many of you know and have experienced firsthand, I'm available and working most of the time. So this is rarely an enacted provision, but...
Okay. So just to cap that discussion off there, if there's any questions, certainly let me know. Again, this role, the acting city manager role, carries significant responsibility, and as Mr. Buchanan mentioned, practically speaking, it's not often that the city manager position is able to take long periods away, so we have a shorter threshold here of three days. We're happy to talk about that further if council desires. But moving on, the next proposed change is a brand-new one for the city. This would, in short, give employees the ability to cash out a portion of their accrued vacation leave annually should they meet certain conditions. And we're bringing you this one tonight based on council discussion of the city's 2023 employee compensation survey. That survey recommended that the city explore this concept, and during budget discussions last year, during which the survey was presented to council, it seemed like a majority of council members were interested in pursuing this concept and thought it worthwhile enough to talk about here. So we've got language here that we think threads the needle between encouraging employees to take accrued leave, potentially bolstering employees' total compensation without necessarily boosting wages, and also reducing what could be a large financial liability in the form of paying out accrued leave upon employees' separation from the city. To be clear, the city recognizes the need and importance of employees taking vacation leave, which is why that 80-hour usage threshold is included in this proposed revision. The other important factor here is money, and that's really twofold. What I mean by that is that we're trying to strike a balance between meaningful payout for employees, the 40-hour cash out, and also reducing the potential, even more potentially significant cost to the city. So we're proposing that, again, that cash out be capped to 40 hours a year.
Deputy Mayor Randall.
I think you might have just said this, Mr. Herzog, but what is the cap on accrual?
The accrual is two times the current accrual rate for an employee, and that's a sliding scale. The longer an employee serves at the city, the more vacation they can earn annually. So that's two times their annual rate.
Okay. And the idea is they would have to take 80 hours before they would be able to do a 40?
Yes, the 80-hour usage would unlock this provision.
Okay.
Just to give you a sense of kind of scale, I think it, right now, caps out vacation at 320 hours is your yearly maximum. If anything over that at the end of the year, you lose that.
Councilmember Bestkam.
How many employees are we talking about that have more than 80 hours of vacation accrued, who could probably take advantage of this? Just getting an idea of how much vacation staff is not taking and why aren't they taking it? And yeah, they could cash it out, but burnout is kind of a problem? So how do we prevent people from just banking and burning out?
I think the end of the year last year, and this may be or may not be representative, I'd have to go back and look at the data, but the end of last year, I think we had a half dozen employees who had hours they needed to use or lose. Myself included as an example, I ended up taking off the last two weeks of the year and still lost hours after that because that's what it is. And that's understandable in my position, but this is partially to help with that. They're recognizing, I think, that there will be years where workload simply doesn't allow them to take the full amount that they've accumulated and not penalizing them for that.
Right. So you're saying that this is, there are half a dozen employees right now that are not taking enough vacation time, right?
Last year is an example, correct?
Right. But who could feasibly take advantage of this program? So there's, we've identified six. Can I guess that they're all in the room right now?
Maybe two of the, I'm trying to go from memory here, maybe two of the six were, but point well taken, yes.
Okay. So then how do we, yes, this cash out's nice, but also it'd be nice not to see around here for at least 80 hours a year? How do we, this gives a cash out, but I think we need to have a policy, and I guess, again, this goes back to this compensation, a full holistic approach of what this compensation study looks like is, how do we actually make you want to leave and give you enough coverage so that you can? So we don't have to take advantage of this program. This is nice to have, but I'd rather not see a lot of staff for two weeks or more a year.
I think you raise an excellent point there, which is a much bigger conversation about how do we ensure that we have the resources to be able to do that realistically?
Deputy Mayor Randall.
Yeah, I would say to the council member's point, I think that this is actually both sides of that. This is, hey, I want to go on vacation, and in order for me to go on vacation, I need somebody to stand in. That was slide number one, and this one is, hey, if you haven't taken your vacation, you get to cash it out. So I think that there's a bit of balance here. I do have a couple of concerns about the first one, like in terms of maximum vacation and how this overlaps with you are now temporary city manager, how often that happens, and length of tenure for that. So I think that's something that might need a little bit deeper discussion. But I was going to let you get through the whole thing before you dug into that a little deeper.
Councilmember Evans.
So I just want to make sure that we're all centered on this. The only way that you could cash out up to 40 hours, so one week, is if you actually take two weeks or 80 hours off. So we are actually incentivizing the people who have 300-plus hours to take two weeks off, and then they can cash out the other week and maybe not have the use it or lose it situation. I do hear you. I think it's a point well taken that we need to take a look and see, are we allowing our city leaders enough depth in the bench or enough coverage when they need to be gone so that they can be, and they're not being pulled back in with emergencies or just overload? But I do want to remind everybody, this isn't like I just get to choose to be cashed out. You have to take two weeks away. You have to take 80 hours before you can do a maximum of 40 hours, which is basically saying that we'll let you have three weeks, two weeks out of the office, and one week reimbursed.
Moving along to the next one. Okay. This proposed revision would remove the city's shared leave program. The current language in the city's policies established that program, which authorizes employees to donate accrued sick leave to another employee who was ill or injured and who has exhausted their accrued leave. Eligibility criteria for the employee to request shared leave includes several requirements such as applying for state industrial insurance benefits, again, like I mentioned, exhausting their own accrued leave, and receiving approval of the city manager. And we're proposing removal of this section for a few reasons. Foremost, the leave landscape has changed pretty drastically since this city policy was enacted. Specifically, the state established its paid family medical leave program, and I note that because that program has much lower eligibility thresholds than those I just mentioned in the existing policy, and it allows up to 12 to 18 weeks of paid leave, depending on circumstances. So it's a very generous policy or program run at the state level that offers a lot of options. In addition, our experience has been that very few employees have met eligibility criteria to even use the program in the last decade, including those years prior to the implementation of the state program that I mentioned. And lastly, when we factor in the requirements of the federal leave program, FMLA and PFML, and then add in the shared leave program that was never really designed to work in concert with either of those programs, the shared leave program becomes incredibly difficult to communicate to staff, let alone administer it on top of those programs. So again, here, we're recommending removal. We don't think it'll be a big impact, again, because it hasn't been used very much, nor will it have a big impact on employees either.
Councilmember Edwards.
Question about the shared leave provisions. Are the new things implemented under the PFML the same requirements typically that would be under the shared leave provision? My question is getting at, are there any overlaps where the shared leave provision would have covered someone where these new acts would not? Because I've seen cities have the shared leave provisions where it's really helped an employee when they really need it at certain points. I just want to make sure that if they were eligible for that, they would still be able to qualify for these other programs, so there's no gaps that are left there that weren't there before.
Practically speaking, I'm struggling to think of a realistic scenario that the shared leave program would be useful instead of or in addition to paid family medical leave run at the state level or FMLA, paid family medical leave, as it sounds, it's paid. There is a cap on that, however, and we're allowing employees to implement or supplement their leave with accrued leave. So that's another way of making their paycheck whole and maximizing their time off should they need it.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Moving along, the background here with this PFML clarification regarding normal pay is that the city developed policies around the state's PFML program as that was being rolled out. Of the city's policies relating to that program, pre-existing provisions disallow employees to collect pay from the city and pay from the PFML program that would be in excess of their typical city wage. In other words, the existing provisions prevent double-dipping. So we see this proposed change as really just a housekeeping item to make usage of the program clearer so that employee taking the leave and other employees administering the leave are clear on expectations. And the last proposed change we have for you tonight for your consideration are changes that would authorize the use and accrual of a floating holiday. Every year, regular employees accrue one floating holiday to be used by the end of the year, and the changes we're proposing are in response to infrequent situations in which employees, A, are hired late in the year and must use a floating holiday before it is forfeited at the end of the year, and also another situation we've experienced, employees departing from the city soon after beginning their employment, and then the city would pay out that leave according to other policies. So this proposed language aims to prevent those real-world experiences that we've unfortunately gone through in the last few years. This proposal would allow only new employees to accrue a floating holiday 60 calendar days after their employment, and it goes on to disallow accrual of a floating holiday during the calendar year if employment begins after October 1st. If that were the case, though, again, the employee would accrue a floating holiday after 60 calendar days, as I mentioned.
So to drive the point home on the example that Mr. Herzog mentioned, we experienced where we had one employee show up for his first day of work, decided this was not the right job for him, left, and we owed him a floating holiday after one day of work.
Councilmember Bestkam.
Just, I wanted to clarify here. So if someone starts on October 1st, do they get to use their floating holiday come January 1 after those 60 days are up, or do they have to wait then 60 days from January 1st? So that essentially, they're waiting 120 days?
No, it would be 60 days after the beginning of employment. So if employer, employee, excuse me, started on, let's just say, October 2nd, that would be accrued, ready for the employee's use 60 days after that.
So January 1st, they would be able to use it?
What's that?
January 1st of the following year, they would be able to use it, okay?
Yeah. Councilmember Edwards.
To clarify, in that situation, they would actually lose it, right? Because they'd have to use it within that calendar year.
They wouldn't earn one if I'm, you correct me if I'm wrong, they wouldn't earn one if they started on October 2nd or October 1st. They wouldn't earn one for that year. They would earn the yearly date on January 1st, they'd have it available January 1st.
And they'd have the whole year to use that.
Right.
Okay, that makes sense, so thank you.
Okay. All right. Well, I hope that wasn't too painful. Certainly available to answer any questions, and I'll even volunteer other staff should we need them. Looking at Mr. Fritz over there. But if the council is liking what they see, we have recommended motion language there for you.
Councilmember Evans.
Thank you. I'm okay with all of these except the first one. I think that one needs a lot more discussion, and I just need to understand more about that one. I just, I don't know, I think an earlier comment where, you know, when your boss goes on vacation, you just fill in, that's been my experience my entire professional life. And so I just would need to know more about this one, so I don't want to include this one in the main motion, just personally.
Councilmember Edwards.
Yeah, and cities that use out-of-class or like-minded programs like that, the 80 consecutive hours, it makes sense there with that one. In terms of the three days, I think what could be helpful there is establishing some sort of, I guess, criteria, or something that tracks that better, because where I see issues that cities implement in this is, when is that actually there? There's a lot of discrepancies of, is this qualify for that? Does that not? And that's where I think the out-of-class, specifically short-term out-of-class, I've seen the issues with that. So creating a clarification of how that would be implemented and how that would actually be put in place, and when that would specifically be implemented for that employee.
Councilmember Bestkam.
I agree about the working out of class, but I also wanted to make a point about the employee vacation cash out. So I understand that this is part of policies, but it also does have an effect on overall staff compensation. And in this biennium, we're supposed to have a comprehensive study where we deal with not just salaries but overall compensation. I'd like to see this deferred until we have that full study so that I can say, yes, this will make a difference, or this will push us over in terms of total compensation package. Right now, it just feels like we're adding more and more and more on without having an understanding of what the entirety of the package looks like. This isn't, oh, I think this is a great opportunity to get rid of people who have too many hours, Brandon. But I would also like to see what impact that has on our overall package and overall budget moving forward. So if we could just defer this, I think it would be, it would make more sense for us to be able to say with a straight face, this is now part of our compensation package from a, again, a holistic approach of looking at the entirety of what we offer and not just taking everything piecemeal.
I can maybe just add a thought on that. I don't disagree with the council member. I think the nuance here is that this compensation is on the books by virtue of that, they've earned that time, right? And so part of the thought here, there, again, there's a myriad of issues here, right? We're talking about burnout and everything else. One of those is this time is earned, and this is a potential for that paid leave to be paid out at current rate versus some future rate, right? So there's the financial consideration to the city that also needs to be considered as part of this.
And this is one of those positions that, I agree that there are too many of you who are not taking vacation, and that's an overall problem. I know I'm looking at you too, because I know you're one of them, Mr. Souza. But again, I do think it's important that we have a complete understanding of what a compensation package looks like. If we could put this in, I mean, I don't know how long it's going to take us to put out an RFP for someone to come in and do a full compensation study for us so that we can be clear. Maybe we do two weeks of cash out, I don't know. That's the problem, I don't know. I would like to have more information so that maybe it's more than 40 hours that we offer as a cash out for people. I don't know. I would like to just have a little bit more time to see what our options are in terms of total compensation so that we don't keep coming back piecemeal on this.
Councilmember Edwards.
That was dropping my point, thank you.
I guess, so having come from the public sector, you know, the working out of classification and being paid for that classification is pretty common, and it happens immediately. So the day that you're working that job is the day you get the pay of that classification. So that is not even close to unusual. It's commonly done. You have to use 80 hours, two weeks, before you can cash out 40. I think that's a great idea. It's another benefit to employees. I don't think it's overly costly, so I think that's a great direction. And I guess my last point and a question to the city manager is, you know, we hire the city manager to manage the staff and to address these issues, and so my question is, the city manager, where are you at on these issues? Are these things that you'd like to see addressed? Are they appropriate? And you work with the staff on a daily basis, and so I'm going to defer to you on a lot of this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I mean, obviously, I believe in the value of these, and that's why they're being proposed this evening. I hear the concern on the first one, certainly. That one, I think, as much as anything, is my recognition that my job has some unusual strings that come with it, and when I ask somebody to do that so that I can take a break from that, I know that they get past those strings. But certainly, if there's a concern about that, we can continue to work on that particular issue if council is comfortable with any number of the rest of them. Council could take action on that, and we can come back in the future if we work the first one and rehash that conversation.
Any further questions, comments? More discussion? Deputy Mayor Randall.
I can do it. I can do it as maker of the motion, but I do want to see that first one come back with clarity on the triggers. Who we refer to, like, can there be multiple people who have been given your duties? We need clarification on those types of things, what triggers what, and how we pivot when that actually takes place. Because as stated, you also deserve vacation, but we don't want to pay three or four city managers.
Point of offer, if you were to make a motion, I would make an amendment to make that part of the motion as well.
Certainly. I moved that the city council adopt resolution number 634 approving all revisions except the first edit to the city's personnel, personal policies.
Second.
A motion second. As maker of the motion, Deputy Mayor Randolph, you have the first chance to discuss it.
Yeah, I believe I brought up the thing that I wanted to bring up for 4.81, and I guess that I can hear the amendment to the motion as we discuss, and that's fine.
Counselor Mary Best Campbell.
I'd like to amend the main motion to also take 0.6 dot 1 dot 5 and remove it until such time as we have a full compensation survey of salary and benefits, and then come back to it at a later date.
Second.
I have a second. As maker of the motion, Counselor Mary Best Campbell.
Yeah, I think we can, we can get this done relatively quickly. This isn't, we're here in February, we could probably have something done if we get an R F P out, we could have something soon. I just think it's really important that we have the ability to back up why we're doing it. I want to make sure that if we're adding this, is this enough? Is there more? Is there less? What does it mean for the entirety of the compensation package? We haven't had a full view of it yet. I would like to see this added to it. Yes, this is policy, but it also does touch compensation. So I want to make sure that we're making everything work together so that we're not picking here and picking there and just hoping that something is going to work. I want to make sure that whatever we choose does work. So this is something that we can address a little bit later, just as we are with the city manager's, acting city manager role.
Counselor Mary Evans.
Thank you. I am in favor of this, and the reason is, is because these are accrued benefits. This is not additional to their compensation package. These are benefits that have been earned in years past that have just been deferred. And so I feel like it's fair to say you must take 80 full hours, two full weeks, before you can tap into this benefit. And I also think it's fair to limit it so that people aren't just accruing their vacation to cash it out and get a big bonus. This seems like a really fair way to compensate people for years of work and not being able to take the vacation that they deserve. And again, this is not on, this is not an addition, this is something that they earn. If they retired or quit tomorrow, they would get paid out for all 300-plus hours. So this is not anything that they haven't already gotten on their books, it's just a way for them to get that if in lieu of being able to take multiple weeks off.
Counselor Mary Art.
I think there's also something to be said for allowing people to cash out in smaller increments instead of waiting for them to retire or leave and then cash out a large sum. I think that is a more predictable expense for the city.
Deputy Mayor Randolph, do you have?
I also want to better understand what the council member is actually looking for in terms of clarity that would come out of this additional consideration. The numbers that we have are already calculated based on the person's salary, so I'm just trying to get a clear understanding of what this additional lack of clarity, what are we looking for?
Counselor Mary Best Campbell.
So the clarity is how this relates to our overall compensation package. If we say, if you accrue above 80 hours, you can cash out 40. What if, if you accrue above 80 hours, you can cash out another 80 hours? Whatever you take, you can cash out. I know some private sector employers do that. The purpose of having a compensation study is to say, is it enough to say 40? Do we want to offer a higher level? Do we want to offer a lower level? Right now, we're locked into up to 40. I want to see what the flexibility looks like. I don't see why this is a problem to defer it. It would still be within the calendar year, and hopefully some staff would take vacation as opposed to waiting until we come up with an option here. I want to get more clarity on what other levers within this 80 hours of use, 40 hours, we have. I don't see this as anything that's denying staff time off. They might have to wait a few more months to cash out vacation, but we don't currently have it anyway, so there's nothing ventured, nothing gained here. I think more information is better. If you don't agree, well, that's your opinion.
Counselor Mary Evans.
So I don't want to conflate the salary study, which I think is very important and we definitely need to get, with this specific personnel policy, which actually can be used for retention, for attracting new talent. This is a benefit that people have earned. Again, this is not on top of, this is not in addition to the packages that we've already put out there. And I would say that if our salary commission comes, or our salary study comes back and says, hey, this should be, you know, 80 hours of vacation and 80 hours of leave, we can come back and amend that, but in the meantime, the city employees and anybody that we're trying to attract to work at the city knows that if you are unable to take your vacation, it's not a use it or lose it situation where you may not be in a position to be able to use it, but that we will let you cash it out once you hit this threshold. I think it makes good sense, and I think it's a good retention lever in addition to a recruitment lever.
I'm going to weigh in on that. So I sound like I'm on the minority on this opinion, but I'm okay with all three of them. I think that's pretty common to get paid to do the work. So if the city manager were to go on vacation and an employee came in and started doing the job, which is extra duties, extra stress, time, not only is it a good training tool, but you're taking on those duties and should be compensated for doing those duties. That's why everybody works to get compensated for responsibility and the work that they do. So I don't have a problem with any three of them. These are all already earned benefits. I think that, I think, again, I'll go back to the city manager feels that these are what would be appropriate to compensate and retain employees, and I, in this instance, I have to agree, so I'm on that camp. So I'm more in favor with the original motion than I am with the amended motion.
Any other further discussion? Counselor Mary Edwards.
Yeah, I just do want to highlight that out of class is used also for career advancement and development as well, where employees can state that they did work out of class in these specific roles and were compensated for that. I know in a lot of government hiring processes, public hiring process, that allows for a lot of advancement that isn't available without the out of class things. I just want to bring that up based on the point that was previously made.
Any further discussion, questions? Seeing none, we're at the amended motion. Let's, can we repeat? Yeah, can the second amended motion, can we repeat that, what that is?
Would you like me to repeat it?
Yes, please.
I would like to amend the main motion to exclude the vacation leave payout until such time as we do a comprehensive compensation survey.
And just for clarification, that was amended on deleting the first?
No, that was the second one. 6 dot 1 dot 5 is the cash out. That's the amended motion.
But I think the original motion said delete the first one, so we're deleting two of the three options in the amended motion, correct?
Right now, the amended motion is just to delete the 615.
The current vote is just 6 dot 1 dot 5.
Right, then you'd go back to the primary motion, which was adopted with the exclusion of 4.8.1.
Correct.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, let's have a roll call vote on this, please.
Counselor Mary Evans?
No.
Counselor Mary Edwards?
No.
Counselor Mary Best Campbell?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Millman?
No.
Counselor Mary Art?
No.
Counselor Mary Taylor?
Yes.
And Deputy Mayor Randolph?
No.
Thank you.
Motion fails five-two. Do I have? The main motion?
Yeah, right.
Okay, so main motion, can we have a roll call vote on that?
Counselor Mary Evans?
Yes.
Counselor Mary Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Mary Best Campbell?
No.
Mayor Millman?
Yes.
Counselor Mary Art?
Yes.
Counselor Mary Taylor?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Deputy Mayor Randolph?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries five-two, thank you very much. Business item number seven, presentation of the 2024 legislative session update. Mr. Hill.
Great, thank you, just one moment while this loads. Perfect. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. My name is Jared Hill. I'm going to be providing you with a legislative update. And as you can see, these past few days have been extremely busy, leading up to some key deadlines in the legislative process. This week, we reached the midpoint of the 60-day session, which came very quickly. We've also just passed the first two cutoff deadlines where bills must be voted out of the Policy and Fiscal Committees to continue advancing this year. We now turn to floor action where each body, House and Senate, must take a full vote on a bill to move it forward. Bills have until February 13th to be voted out of their House of origin. We have been working with A W C and our state lobbyists to make sure we are closely monitoring developments and communicating our legislative agenda. Here you will see the legislative agenda for 2024 that continues to serve as a guide for us during session and will be what we, and will be what guides us through legislative advocacy during A W C Action Days in Olympia tomorrow and Thursday. We have meetings scheduled with representatives from both the 1st and 45th District and look forward to expressing council's priorities. In addition to sharing legislative priorities, we will also communicate that we are working creatively to advance our top transportation priority, the State Route 202 trussler replacement and highway widening. Senator Stanford is working with Chair Leas to move the project from future funding and put it into a timeline that prevents federal funding from being put at risk. And this is part of Washington's Move Ahead Washington package. So we will also be reminding our delegation to please provide us with letters of support for our federal raise grant application, and the next few slides will highlight some of the legislative propositions we will be communicating as well. So first off, as you know, A W C has their own legislative agenda. They currently have one bill identified as a priority support position, which is S B 5770. This is to allow local governments to adjust property tax caps up to 3%. This was not a priority on council's legislative agenda, not something we have advocated for. Senate Ways and Means Committee voted to move this bill out of committee yesterday, and the bill is now on the way to Rules Committee awaiting further action. I have two slides on bills being raised as a concern by A W C as well as their brief summary next to it. Similar to the support bills, not all of these have a nexus with what council is looking to accomplish this session or impact us primarily, as a primarily contract city. H B 2113 is flagged as a concern for us as well as it creates unnecessary state involvement and adds additional administrative burden in our already tedious comp plan process. And to carry on from the last slide, I just wanted to briefly touch on H B 2160, which is the T O D bill you may have heard about. And I know I touched on this at the last meeting, but just to make sure it's still on your radar, without significant transit infrastructure in place, this bill does not directly impact Woodinville. I call this out as it may be something you hear comments on from the community, but given that T O D is not tied to limited bus service we currently have, it's not something of significance to staff at this time. H B 2474 is something I'm bringing to you for the first time this week. This bill is seen as a response to Ken Moore's decision regarding the 100-unit supportive housing project they considered. It's concerning, it is concerning compliance with siting requirements for transitional housing, permanent supportive housing, indoor emergency shelters, and indoor emergency housing. And this will be a little bit of a mouthful, so bear with me here, but right now, we're working with A W C and our state lobbyists to get more clarity on this bill because there is some general confusion on the practicality of its implementation. Yesterday, it passed out of the House Appropriations Committee, and the House bill analysis reads that the bill directs cities to submit any zoning ordinances and development regulations addressing occupancy, spacing, or intensity of use requirements for transitional housing, permanent supportive housing, indoor emergency shelters, or indoor emergency housing to the Department of Commerce for review and approval prior to denial or rescinding a permit application. The bill authorizes Commerce to develop all zoning regulations for any zone within the city that allows residential housing units or hotels until a city's ordinance found and violation is amended. So we're very concerned about that bill, and I'm going to take a brief pause right there.
Counselor Mary Evans.
Thank you. So it sounds, so I'm worried that this already got out of committee, number one, because that sounds to me like there's some force behind it. But number two, it sounds to me like anybody who wants to put any of this in a city that allows housing, which is every city in this state, that they can just come in and redo our zoning and take over, and we have no say? Is that, is that what this says?
I would say you're generally understanding that correctly, that if it's a supportive housing, some sort of project in that realm that fits within general housing code for that area, the city would need to require, to allow it to be permitted or submit the zoning regulations to Commerce in advance with the reason why the project doesn't fit within zoning for their comments.
And do they, do they give any guidance as to what would be appropriate to say? I mean, basically, they're taking away local control on this, number one. And number two, if there's no rules about it, it just seems like there's a big risk. I mean, we saw what happened in Kenmore, and clearly, there was a lot of community engagement about that, and there was a lot of questions about why it had to be there, community safety. Is there any of that consideration in here, or is it just you will put this in because we have a need and you don't have a say?
I think you're correct. I think this is seen as a response to the Kenmore situation. I think perhaps maybe a few specific situations like that sparked the state to feel the need to step in in that specific area. It does go against council's legislative agenda requiring local control. We have expressed that there's not clarity from Commerce on how this would be implemented, and we also feel this would be a big lift from Commerce, so we're interested in their comments on this bill as well.
And has A W C come out with their stance against it?
Yeah, A W C came out in, as a priority bill for opposition on this. They haven't issued new comments in a couple of days, but we're hoping that tomorrow at Action Days, we can get some additional clarity because a lot of cities have the same concerns as Woodinville.
Yeah, because I was looking to see if they had it today since it just came out of committee, and I didn't see it, so thank you.
Counselor Mary Best Campbell.
Mr. Grumbach, didn't we pass something recently? I know you're ready to answer this one. We had to pass something from Commerce where we said we are allowing, we have to allow transitional housing anywhere that has hotels. So don't we have most of these provisions already? This seems like a completely redundant and showy bill from Olympia.
Well, this is part of the confusion of the legislation that we've commented on, and we're not the only ones, others have as well. Nobody actually really knows what this thing means. We know it's a reaction, but the way it's written and stuff, it's really unclear because you're correct, we do have provisions that we were required to do, I think it was back in 2021, regarding emergency shelters, the permanent supportive housing, and some other provisions and stuff, and we have adopted those into our ordinances. Kenmore has them as well. So again, how this is supposed to interact with all that stuff, that's kind of what nobody really understands right now.
Well, and I guess the other question I have is, since Olympia seems so keen on having Department of Commerce do literally everything, can they rewrite the comp plan for us?
I don't know if you really would want them to do that, but, you know, we could offer it.
It seems like everything is going through Department of Commerce, Department of Commerce, Department of Commerce is going to review this and this. Are we getting to the point where anyone at Department of Commerce has raised their hand and said, there's no way that we can feasibly make this happen? Has anyone questioned and queried to see if that is even possible? Has anyone questioned and queried to see if that is even possible?
I can touch on that. I had the same thought process as you, and I felt like it was, a lot of these bills are reaching to the point where it's out of the purview of what Commerce would typically oversee. And we did get some feedback from our, our state lobbyists, that there's been conversations happening at the state level on perhaps a Department of Housing in the future, that would take all of the housing functions currently housed within Commerce and pull them into a separate department. But that's obviously something that is in early stages, and we'll keep you updated as we hear more.
And the other question is, do any of our representatives support this? And if not them, then who is pushing this through committee? Obviously, there's enough support to push it out of the House. Who is it? And they don't get a fruit basket from us, obviously, but I can't imagine any jurisdiction being in favor of this.
Yeah, I'm happy to send a list to council following this meeting of who, who was on the committee and what the votes were. And then to move on here, finally, we have previously mentioned that there was concern over House Bill 1245, which is the lot splitting bill you might have heard. There's, we're, we're no longer seeing progress on this bill, as it's been stuck in Senate Committee for about a month after passing out of the House. So no longer is something we're overly concerned about. Council has also had an interest in exploring tenant protections. It's not part of your legislative agenda, but just something I know you've asked to keep on the radar, which is HB 2114. It did have a Senate companion bill that died, but this weekend, a substitute bill for HB 2114 passed out of the House Appropriations Committee with a 19 to 10 vote. This bill will now head to the Rules Committee, where it can be pulled for a floor vote, and we'll continue to monitor. Then the last item for me is SB 6015. AWC is currently requesting amendments for this bill before supporting or opposing, and states that it's an incredibly prescriptive state preemption of how cities regulate on and off-street parking for residential development. There are some components to this bill that the city is opposed to and has been communicating. The city is opposed to the state requiring tandem states, sorry, tandem parking spots being allowed to count towards minimum parking requirements for apartments, and is also opposed to propose smaller parking stall standards that do not match what council has previously established in code. And with that, I'm happy to hear anything that's on your radar, and take any questions as well.
I had one question. We, on our list, we had education. Was that, did I miss the slide, or are we still prioritizing that, correct?
Yes, and that's not something I included in this legislative update, because I only did stuff that would impact the city, but I'm happy to include more out of my next one.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that that's still one of our priorities, is fully funding public education.
Yes, thank you for raising that.
Perfect, thank you. Councilmember Wes Campbell?
Uh, Mr. Hill, we talked about, you and I, Senate Bill 5334 about short-term rental excise taxes. Seems appropriate for us to track that, since we just had a conversation about short-term rentals. We don't have a lot now, but there could be potential in the future, and if we could pull a little bit of property tax revenue from the county to us, I think that would be something positive, so maybe that's something that we should consider supporting a little bit more vocally.
Great, thank you. And for SB 5334, I did add that to my list, so thank you for sending that to me. We did identify, we, we have less than 10 of those in the, in the city right now, but perhaps that's something that there's more that we're not aware of. That bill is moving, and it could produce local money. It passed out of the Senate, and last I checked, that was in local government committee in the House, so we'll continue to monitor that bill as well.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, business item number eight, streaming subcommittee meetings. How do we want to handle this? Was that added?
I would suggest, because it was added, we could have the council member speak to it, and then council can have a discussion on the item.
Councilmember Wes Campbell, this was your motion. Would you care to kick us off?
Yep. I just think that since we're going to be having meetings at awkward times, when people are generally away at work, having it streaming is one thing, but not everybody is able to take an hour in the middle of their workday to watch a meeting on short-term rentals. I'm asking that we ought, we do similar to what we do here in council chambers. We've got all of the recording equipment, record the meeting, either do it on Teams or some other way, so that people can then go back in the archives and watch the meeting as well. Reading minutes is one thing, it's different when you see it in person. So I think if we're going to be relying heavily on subcommittees, we want to be able to give the public as many opportunities to see those meetings as they have to see us here. So we have streaming, we have TV, and we have online archives. I understand we probably won't be able to use TV, but we would be able to use Teams and archive the, the team recording. So I think that this isn't really a heavy lift. I don't think it's expensive, and I think it truly is about being transparent and sharing with the people, not just what we've decided, but how we got to that decision.
Councilmember Evans?
So speaking along that lines, I think if we're going to be talking about making things accessible, I would like for us to also take a look at streaming this on YouTube, because having, for example, these council meetings be on cable or just on the Granicus site, which is not always the easiest to navigate to, to find, to search, et cetera, I think that we should expand and go to YouTube, which would be free and open to anyone with internet access, which should be everyone, because you can go to a local library and see it. So I don't have a problem with streaming subcommittee meetings, I don't have a problem with streaming, you know, work groups, or whatever we end up doing, commissions. I think the whole point of the short-term rentals is that there's a lot of detail to get through, and I don't think we want to have council meetings starting at 6:00 PM for the rest of the year. I think that needs to be taken offline, where people can work on it and then get feedback. So if we're going to stream, I, I just think that we should stream everywhere people could potentially be, and not everyone's on cable.
Anyone else? I'll start with a question. Is there anything that concerns the city about anything that's being proposed right now? Is there any issues that I'm not aware of technically, or anything that?
No, I, I think from the technical standpoint, I think that's where I can speak to. I, I think streaming via Teams, we will have to look at the YouTube piece, I'm not familiar with that, we can, we can dive into that. But streaming via Teams during the meeting, having that as, as something where somebody can log into Teams, like we do with these meetings, and, and recording them and posting them for archive purposes, that's easy. It's the, as long as we're not talking about, I need to have our AV provider here for every one of those meetings, that gets expensive and difficult to coordinate. So if, if we're talking recording, posting, that's easy, I can do that. I, I think at some point, if, if this is, I don't, I'd probably need to talk with Ganson, Mr. Ganson offline. This strikes me as something that we would amend in your council rules. You have a council rule in your committee provisions in there that talks about that any of these committee meetings are open to the public. It's why we provide them as such. I think we could further clarify this at a future update about, and shall be recorded and made available. That, that would, I think, be the permanent immortalization of that.
Councilmember Wes Campbell?
So just to be clear, you pretty much get the guidance that the Teams is the route that you can go, that's sort of the easy lift, and in order to do that, we would need to amend rules and procedures. Would we be able to start recording, like the Salary Commission is coming next Monday? Would we be able to, be able to start recording that if there's a consensus of council, and then amending our code after the fact? Can we do that?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think, I, I, I hear the consensus from council, and unless I hear different right now. I hear the consensus from council that this is a desire, we can do that, and then I think at some point, it doesn't have to happen before we start that, to your question. We can amend those council rules, whether that's the next time we take that up naturally, every two years, or some portion, or some point before that, we can figure that piece out, but it does, it's not required for us to do this.
Councilmember Art?
I was actually surprised after our first subcommittee meeting that it wasn't recorded. So I do think that this is an easy and very natural route to stream it via Teams, record it, and make sure that it's available, so people can go back and look at it.
Deputy Mayor Randolph?
And not to get into the weeds, Mr. City Manager, but could you help us understand the overhead that requires us to have staff here to record these meetings?
For any of these, any committee or commission meetings, you're going to have a staff lift on this, right? We've got to prepare the agenda, we've got to do the public noticing, we've got to, well, your rules provide either minutes are provided, or council member from that committee reports, so there's not necessarily...
To be clear, I was thinking more of the digital staff.
Oh, the, so the recording the meeting on Teams, again, that's easy, right? I can bring in the devices we have, set that up, and do that pretty automatically. Having our professional AV consultant running this room and these meetings is an entirely different lift, that comes with costs. I'm not sure what that is off, offhand, but it's a, obviously, a more substantial and costly lift than the simple Teams recording, and that's why I'd probably advocate for that, if possible.
I can add a little bit more to that. What the technician provides is broadcasting and live streaming on our website, a link off of our website, that wouldn't be provided through the Teams functionality. So that's what the technician provides, is an additional service.
The TV wouldn't be provided. They would still be able to live access to meeting, not through our website, but via the Teams meeting link that we provide, for example, somebody joining this meeting.
Correct.
Any other comments, questions? Seeing none, do I?
I don't think we need a motion. I, unless council says otherwise, I think the consensus is pretty clear, and I think it's a pretty easy administrative change.
Okay, and we're going to look into the YouTube, is that?
We'll, we'll look into that. I'm not at all familiar with that, I'm going to have to have our tech staff look at that, so.
Okay, sounds good.
We can do that, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Public comments, do we have anybody sign up for a second round?
No, there's nothing.
Thank you. Reporters, City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. I've got a few items this evening. First of all, we are anticipating if the promised schedule from the county holds true, the release of the draft EIS for the nerds conversation tomorrow. I believe that was February 7th, that would be tomorrow. So we'll look for that, and we'll provide a link once that's public. As mentioned tonight, Salary Commission, Mr. Fritz is going to be leading that effort and coordinating that effort. The, he has set up the meeting and has a packet and agenda ready on our website for that first kickoff meeting on this coming Monday, the 13th? 12? I was close. And then, of course, we have the State of the City invited by the Chamber of Commerce to give that, and I know many of you have been able to participate in that, in that effort, but that is next Thursday at St. Michelle. And so far, again, and as many of you know, we've gone to kind of a new approach this year, where we've got a video that we're putting together, and I think it, I saw a rough draft today, it's actually turned out pretty well despite me being in it, so I'm pretty excited about that.
Thank you. Reports, councilmembers. Councilmember Evans?
Thank you. There's a pretty important school district meeting coming up, and I really encourage everybody to be a part of it. There's some painful cuts that they're going to have to make, they're really having a shortfall. I know two really painful things that are on the docket right now, reducing high schools from seven classes to six classes a day, which will significantly impact their ability to get all their credits in, plus their electives, and have, be, you know, ready for the next stage of life. And the other is they're going to cut elementary band and orchestra and music. So I really, really encourage us, I'm so glad that our city adopted full, a legislative agenda of fully funding education, because this is truly at the state level. The state is choosing not to fully fund education, and it's putting our local school districts in a really hard spot. And secondly, I really encourage us all to be involved, because this is going to be a tough situation for all of our school folks.
Councilmember Edwards?
No, boy, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Randolph?
This being our first meeting in February, I'd like to take a moment to recognize that it is Black History Month. Please take some moments out of your time to recognize Black history, because Black history is American history, and we should all celebrate that piece of history together.
Councilmember Wes Campbell?
Thank you. I wanted to thank Mr. Souza for getting back to me about the, all the sidewalks that are under construction. I received a couple complaints about, how are we supposed to walk on sidewalks if both sides of the street have sidewalk construction? And I know that it's just a function of TRF and Main Street and the city all at the same time, picking the sidewalks that need to be repaired. In future, when we start doing these projects and when construction occurs, I think it's important that we consider, people are walking right now, and we need to start thinking about talking when, when, you know, outside agencies come to us for sidewalk permits. Remember that the sidewalk detour that you think you can use might not always be available. So thank you for, for showing me how it's going, and I know it's going to get better, but it always gets worse before it gets better. And I also wanted to thank, of course, he's not here tonight, because there's nothing wrong with our computers. We had a bit of a phishing expedition on email this morning, this morning or yesterday, and Adam did a very good job of shutting it down, however he does that on Microsoft, so he did a very good job doing the things that tech support does. I don't know, that's not my purview. So thank you, I'm glad that we have people who are here to make sure that we don't do dumb things on our computer. That's it.
Councilmember Art?
Thank you. Just a couple of things to share tonight. First, our severe, North King County severe weather shelter, which our city staff worked really hard to get up and running for this winter. It was operational for a very long stretch of time in January, and it served over 106 nights of shelter. It was located in Shoreline, but there is transportation available. So if there's someone here in Woodinville who needs a warm place to stay on these cold nights, they can call a number and get transportation to the shelter there. I was also able to attend the Affordable Housing Summit, sorry, Symposium, last week, and it provided some really great background information on things that cities can do to streamline their permitting process, small steps that they could implement, and some really great breakdowns of what the math looks like on affordable housing at different levels of affordability. And I'm happy to share the slide deck with anyone. Thank you.
Councilmember Taylor?
I don't have anything. Just, I'm dealing with low bandwidth, so thanks for putting up with me tonight.
Thank you. I'll just share that we're fortunately not getting an early start tomorrow, it was originally going to be 6 o'clock from City Hall, so we are getting a 7:30 start, so we have a really robust Olympia agenda. Wednesday and Thursday, we're meeting with seven, seven representatives and senators, so hopefully that we can get some of our agenda items higher up on the priority list, so that's all I have.